Gonna have to shut that thing off.
I think it's broken on the on position. And maybe another one or three Thursday.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
And then insanely cold for like four or five days, right? Is that what I saw? Or not insanely cold, but cold. So I was telling before you jumped on Kyle, I was watching, enjoying my coffee, watching the security camera with you guys plowing our court in the middle of the night. I was complimenting on the ability to move that truck and miss mailboxes and shove snow and big piles in between people's driveways and come around. It's it's very impressive to watch the plow moving around and tilting from angle angle. And so you guys do a nice job. I don't know if that was you or Dylan, but.
Uh, that was Mark. I have Mark coming on the big storms.
Was that in the, it was in the big truck? You let him ride the big truck?
Yeah, he's got a CDL.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, compliments to all you guys because it's every storm, you've done a wonderful job in our court and around the, you know, you know, hill crest and locusts. So.
Very good job.
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm glad the founders decided to put so many cold sacks in Sleepy Hollow.
That's the overtime pay, doesn't it? I mean, you gotta get, you know.
It does, but after, you know, when you're wrapping it up, oh man, they take forever.
Hey, I'll give you 10 bucks to bury Nimitz driveway next snowfall.
I got a snow blower, so not even a challenge.
Oh, okay. So is that why you put all the snow at the end of my driveway this time?
We'll, we'll just say those were snow drifts.
Okay, gentlemen, we've got the clock that says seven thirty. Let's call the meeting to order, pledge of allegiance. They can hear. All right, gentlemen, I understand we lost video, but you can still hear me. So I will continue. Uh, according to the state, uh, regulations, the public act one hundred one dash zero six forty, which reminds the open meetings act to allow remote attendance when so declared by the governor of the state that we are in a disaster situation due to the pandemic that's still home. So we are once again probably remote. Part of the requirements of a remote meeting is that at least one individual has to be located in the place of normal business for the meeting, which is the village hall. I am present. The village clerk is present, and two trustees are present, and we do have a member of the public present to say me also. Oh, with that being said, we've got video and audio at this point. If the clerk will call roll and verify connections, please. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Brano.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
Mr. Zamba.
Here.
Mr. Merkel.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
We have a full forum. We have a meeting. Uh, the minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, moved by Merkel, seconded by Zima. Any corrections to the minutes of December or January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
This is the corrected minutes, correct?
These are the corrected minutes.
Yep.
Yep.
There being no additional corrections to them. A roll call, please. Mr. Merkel. Mr. Zamba abstained. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
And Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, one extension, the minutes to January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, so pass. Okay, President's Report this evening. Uh, the major information I have this evening is the virtual public information meeting to be held by Kane County Division of Transportation in regards to the Randall Road I ninety intersection. Uh, this meeting will be virtual as of six P M. Thursday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. It is available via Zoom. And I'll tell you, it's a long address for the Zoom invite. What I'm going to do is ask that this be placed up on the village website. If that's possible, so that everybody can see it. But this is a public information hearing or meeting by Zoom. Six P M. Thursday, February fourth. All the information's on the card. You've probably got something in the mail if you're a resident of Sleepy Hollow along the corridor of Randall Road. Uh, this is the, oh, this is the second public information meeting that they had. They had one about a year ago, if you recall, down at the Hemmans Auditorium. This has been going on the better part of two years and will probably continue for another year or two. They've got some interesting ideas and conceptions as to things to be considered in ninety or Randall and ninety. So I urge y'all to take a look at it. I will let you know that the village has voiced concerns over any remake of Randall Road as what has it on affects the light and sound issues for the residents of the village that live along that corridor. So just want you to know that that voice or that concern has already been brought to their attention and will continue to be brought to their attention through the rest of this process. But six o'clock, Thursday, the fourth, uh, Zoom meeting or the Randall over ninety, virtual meeting. Uh, that's it for the President's Report, Court's Report. No report tonight. Okay, thank you, Anthony. Planning and zoning, no report. Attorney, Mr. Schuster. Thank you, sir.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Engineer.
Break it, but I have some items. First off is, you recall at the last board meeting is that there were two permit requests that actually weren't on the agenda, so we can vote on them. One of those permits has actually uh, been canceled in regards to a comment permit. So basically all that's left, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, is basically there's only one permit, uh, on tonight's agenda, and that's from Intron on behalf of Comet. Uh, so basically is, is they're just replacing a lot of lines that are throughout the village. You can see in the letter as far as the exact locations. Uh, any questions basically is needs board approval, so we can get done working on that.
Jeff, I don't have it in front of me. Is the one that we're approving, is that the one that had a couple of the transformers that were low and flood?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we force them to, to raise us to appropriate level? Because that just seems like a huge safety issue. I don't.
Yeah, I don't know if we can't force them at, but well, I suppose we could force them at least as far as just greatly suggest to them that they need to be raised, just because they're obviously a hazard as far as if the water ends up getting too high. So we could just kind of reinforce that to them saying, hey, uh, while you're replacing your lines is make aware that you need to raise them.
Yeah, it just seems like I just, I would hate to have water in a transformer. I've seen some of these that the water is a foot, couple of feet on it. I assume if somebody, it's potential that somebody could get electrocuted if they were.
Yeah, in, yeah. I say in my review letter, I actually stated for them to actually take a look into it, so I can actually reach out to them also in order to try and get them to just take a closer look at it, too.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Do we have a motion to approve, uh, the comment request? Some more.
Second, Harney.
Moved by Zima, seconded by Harney to approve the permit from Comet with the replacement of cables as noted in the permit application. Any further comments, questions, or discussions? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Zamba. Aye. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Dattley.
Aye.
Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel. Six affirmative votes, one negative votes, motion so passes, and it's granted.
Uh, the next, uh, the next item is to pass a maintenance resolution appropriating available funds from the motor fuel tax account to fund the Sleepy Hollow Road resurfacing project. Uh, this will cover both the construction and also the engineering inspection for it. Uh, it's in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, I believe in talking with Stefan and talking with the account is there's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, correct? The total net, so this more than covers the amount to actually resurface the road and also to affect it.
So moved. Second, Dattley.
Moved by Nimitz, seconded by Zima to approve the resolution. This will be number five thirty, five thirty. Okay, any comments, questions, or discussion? Resolution five thirty. There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Zamba. Aye. Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, one negative votes, motion so passes.
Uh, just so you guys are aware is for that project is we're still on for a June eleventh bit opening on that letting date, and that is let through the state letting system. So after that is let, it'll probably be another couple of months, month, month and a half-ish until that actually starts construction. So.
Jeff, did you say the date was June eleventh?
Yeah, for the letting.
The letting?
Yeah.
Okay, there's just no way we can avoid falling Sleepy Hollow without roads, which is.
No, it's, it has to be done.
We can't do it in the spring. You gotta wait till fall.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else, Jeff?
That is it.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, we've got an eight o'clock. We can either move right on to the eight o'clock. I see Ms. Wilkie has joined us. If she's ready.
I'm here.
Okay. Then let's go to the eight o'clock presentation of the fiscal year twenty audit for the village of Sleepy Hollow. Uh, to present on behalf of Water, Mark, and Almond is Miss Jamie Wilkie, joining us remote. Ms. Wilkie.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, so I just want to confirm that everyone has a copy of the audited financial statements kind of accessible in front of them. Well, this evening just briefly cover some of the high level sections within the document, kind of talk about the audit process itself. Um, and then we can certainly open it up for any specific questions that the board might have as well. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the board and staff for another clean audit this year. Um, obviously, the pandemic added some uniquenesses to our audit process over this last cycle. So uh, certainly we're thrilled to be able to present this evening another clean audit opinion for the village. Uh, you will find that opinion on pages one and two of the audit document. Each year, the village is required under state statute to undergo a financial statement audit. Uh, the goal is really twofold. Number one, to make sure that the financial statements as presented are in fact materially correct. And or two, we are required as part of that process to assess the overall internal control environment. So while we are not providing an actual opinion on the internal controls, we are required to assess the overall control environment. Uh, we do detailed testing of controls. Uh, certainly if there were any red flags, issues, areas of concern, those would have to be brought forth to the board this evening. And we're happy to report we have no such findings. So truly the highest level opinion that we can issue for any government entity this evening. Immediately after the audit opinion on pages four through sixteen of the document, you'll find what I would call the most important section of the report, especially from a board member's perspective. Uh, this section is called management's discussion and analysis and really serves as the executive summary to the document. Uh, it's a rather long report. As you can see, there's a lot of obviously financial statement disclosures as well as note disclosures. Um, and has time has gone on, the governmental accounting standards board or GASB has really added page to our audit reports and kind of, um, in some cases, overcomplicated the interpretation of the document. And so pages four through sixteen really do serve as that high level overview. Uh, in particular, page four of the village's audit will provide some of those key financial highlights for the year. I certainly was not going to go through them in detail this evening, but again, I would encourage you to review this section um, in more detail if you haven't yet. Uh, overall, I did want to mention that the village's financial position did improve for the fiscal year. Uh, much of this you will find is centered around continued investment in capital assets as well as a retirement of long-term debt. Uh, so when we have those two things working together, um, i.e. building assets on the balance sheet and reducing our overall debt structure. Um, that is obviously when we have overall increases to financial performance or financial position for the village. Um, and that was the case for this most recent year as well. I just want to point out a couple of financial statement pages as you have a chance to review them in a little more detail. Uh, page twenty-three of the document will provide the income statement for the village's governmental funds. So this would be every fund excluding water and sewer. Uh, you'll see here there was a slight decrease in fund balance for the year, uh, really the result of that investment in capital assets during the fiscal year. Each twenty-six of the document will provide the income statement for the water and sewer fund. And you'll actually see there was an increase to overall position here in the water and sewer fund to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars. Again, much of that is reflected from capital asset investments during the year. Each forty-six of the document through basically the last page of the report will provide the budget to actual comparison schedules for the villages funds. So if you were curious, for example, how the general fund did in comparison to the budget that was passed, each forty-six in particular would provide that outline for you. Uh, you'll see in the case of the general fund, it really did nearly hit target as we compare it to budget. Uh, there was a slight additional surplus in the general fund during the year, and so the village was able to increase the annual transfer to the capital fund, uh, to fund future capital needs as well. Um, but overall, I just want to reiterate a very clean audit process, um, and certainly I'd be able to highlight any other areas that the board feels need to be highlighted or answer any specific questions this evening.
Are there any questions from Ms. Wilkie this evening?
Well, one of the questions I have is not, uh, based on the numbers, but the list, the list of the principal office officials on the page, uh, is incorrect. So there are previous trustees on there. Uh, so that needs to be updated to show the proper names of the current trustees and also the administrative names. Some need to be adjusted.
Sure. So I, that I will kind of lean on you guys. I will tell you that typically those are whoever was in place as of that April thirtieth date. So just wanted to make sure I kind of say that out loud, that that's typically what most communities do is list, um, whatever the board was that was responsible for that audit or administration that was kind of responsible for that audit. But I can certainly, um, take any feedback that the board has if we want to try to update those or footnote certain things.
Should that be done through, uh, the village clerk?
Uh, no, we would have to update that document that the, the manager for that is housed by our firm.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, uh, perhaps the village clerk can submit the names because uh, the people who are missing, the incorrect names are trustees that were in place in April uh, of this past year of twenty twenty. But is that something, uh, Tony, you can furnish to the auditors?
I think certainly, yes. And I think the director of finance needs to be vacant for, you know, he wasn't here in, in April also.
Correct.
Certainly, we can get any of that feedback and update that page on behalf of the village.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else for Jamie? This is Don Zamba again, Jamie. I thought you guys did a good job this year again. I liked your commentary.
Thank you, Don. Good to quote, see you.
I'll miss you. Okay. That, that's it. No further comments or questions. So we have a motion to accept the, uh, audit as presented. I move that we accept the annual financial report audit with the caveat of having those changes made as village officials on page one.
Second, Dattley.
Moved by Zima, seconded by Dattley to accept the fiscal year twenty audit as presented with the caveat that the, uh, names of the officials be correct. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
I, I have a comment. Um, I, I've raised it before. Um, and I, I don't mean to, uh, cast any aspersions on Waterback and Amen. Uh, but, but my concern still is that their offices in our building, helping us with the day-to-day or however often their employees here are looking at our, our books and such, and then having the same company do our audit. And I'm sure they're very honorable people, but it just doesn't seem correct to me if they have somebody overlooking the work from their own firm. So for whatever reason, just I want, I want to be able to vote to accept. Just wanted to make it.
Sure. Our, our intent, just so we're clear, is we will not be doing the audit going forward. So obviously this was kind of a transitional year with when we came in um, the April thirtieth date. So, you know, at what point in time we were really providing full-fledged services, if that makes sense. So um, we've already chatted internally that due to independence, we would not be able in future years to be able to conduct those audits again.
Any other comments? Okay, no other comments. Uh, roll call, please. Uh, Mr. Zamba. Aye. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
No.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, one negative vote, the motion so passes. Thank you, Ms. Wilkie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Enjoy your evening.
Will do. Okay, the next item is the finance report. We've got the accounts payable January or February first, two thousand twenty-one. I move that we approve the accounts payable warrants of February first, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of ninety-four thousand, sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second, Harney.
Moved by Zima, seconded by Harney to approve the warrants for February first, two thousand twenty-one. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Zamba. Aye. Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brano.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Five or six affirmative votes, motion so passes. Okay, next one, comments from the public. We do have a member from the public who went with us this evening. Mr. Ambly, should we have the floor?
Thank you. Um, I know Daisy was brought up at the last board meeting. Uh, unfortunately, that was the day after she was found, and I'm still catching up on five days of little sleep. But I wanted to come down and thank many people that helped us to find our dog. Uh, there were so many people in this village that stepped forward and offered thoughts and prayers, which is not trivial, but it did so much to keep the spirits in my family up, keep us hopeful. There were people that went out on their own going through the third sanctuary, looking for dog prints, looking for Daisy, or going out in their backyard into the woods, looking for her. Uh, I can't say enough about how many people in this village stepped forward. Uh, there were also people that moved their wedding cameras from the front door to the back door, put out food to try to entice her to come in so we could see a sighting of her, so we could find her. And I didn't have to ask for any of that. This was all just people just going stepping forward as well as other communities around us. I also wanted to recognize the ladies that worked in the office here. Uh, from the very first day, they were incredible, from putting Daisy's story on the village Facebook page to going to their own social media platforms and posting, uh, notices about Daisy. Uh, they were just always there, always positive, always helpful. Uh, the Rotten Dundee Fire Department, I can't say enough about them. They spent almost two hours trying to get Daisy out from, from that pipe. And like, they were just beyond words. But I also wanted to truly thank the Sleepy Hollow Police Department. Whether I was out looking for the dog and saw a squad car go up to say, hey, I'm looking for my dog. If you happen to see her, and they said, we know all about her. We've been looking and we're gonna keep looking. Um, and then when we did find her, the police were so helpful in making sure that the recovery operation went without any interruption, without any problems, hassles. Uh, I just can't say enough about the, the police department and the job that they did. Wanted to say thank you. And I'll just finish this by saying, I hope the residents of this village realize what a special place we have. I've lived here since nineteen sixty, and it's because this is a special place. And sometimes in our busy days and with the COVID and trying to make ends meet, we forget to, as they say, smell the roses. And I hope people realize this is a really special community. And it's the people that make it special. And in a time like my family had a need, to see the people step up and just come forward makes you even more appreciative of what we have. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, returning to the agenda. Trustee reports, uh, Rose and Parks.
Uh, just a couple of things. There's a couple of things I received. Two phone calls today expressing their appreciation of the plowing that seems to be going on rather continuously over the last couple of weeks or so. So Kyle, uh, it's been noticed by the residents and I'll pass their thanks along to you. Appreciate, uh, all your guys' work and yourself. Uh, one other thing, just an awareness item for the board. Uh, we were recently notified by the Dundee Township Park District that Sabatino Park was inspected. And they want a meeting to discuss the apparatus at the park. And it's well past its service life and they're floating the idea of what we, what we need to do, want to do with a cost-sharing agreement that's in place. And with that in mind, I know that agreement was written a while ago, but Tony, you think you could find that agreement? I'd like to read that before our actual meeting.
Do you have a ballpark timeframe, nineteen ninety-eight?
I, I may have that as well, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, I'll talk to Tony. We'll, we'll hunt it down.
Okay, great. I did. We'll give a good look, but, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see. Okay. Yeah, it was approximately nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two.
It was before two thousand.
Yeah, was it? Okay.
Yeah.
And I did go over to the park and take a bunch of photos, so, um, we'll be ready. Before the snow. Before the snow fell. So, uh, and that's just a heads up to the board of what's going to be taking place, because it, uh, involves some dollars down the road here. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Ed. Uh, finance, Don. Yeah, I apologize. I forgot to email you guys my, uh, review of the statements. I'll send those out tomorrow. I did an analysis comparing December this year versus last year, just to see what it looks like in the general fund, water and sewer fund. I mean, one other item, have, have we done anything?
I mean, one other item, have, have we done anything with putting the note together for the rest of the water project?
Brian and I gotta work that around. We, we're getting the audit squared away.
Okay.
I know, yeah.
Because you know, that's like three hundred grand probably that the general fund is paying that we need to, we need to get it on the book.
Payment schedule.
Yes, okay. That was it.
That's it, all right, thank you, Don. Water and sewer, Mr. Nimick.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Nimick. Police and Public Safety, Mr. Deatley.
Just a couple of things. And you'll notice in your packet, chief included some acknowledgements for officers and everyone involved in the, this, I'll call it the celebration of Daisy because she was found safe inside, so that's the good thing. And then also something that is very big for us and our community and for our police department, the state use of force update and certification. And I would like to ask chief just to make some brief comments on that because I feel it is a very big accomplishment, not only for our department, but for our village as a whole.
Very much so, thank you, Trustee Deatley. Lately, with everything going on in the world, use of force policies and hundreds of Illinois law enforcement agencies are going, undergoing a new level of scrutiny. A federal directive issued under the Trump administration, I believe it was in early November, stated that agencies' use of force policies had to be certified by the end of January twenty twenty one if they wished to even be considered for receiving any federal grant funding at all. Applied to all police departments, sheriff's departments, you name it. U.S. Attorney General indicated that the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police would be the accrediting body for Illinois and for our law enforcement agencies. Every agency that applied for the certification with the I A C P, you had to have fourteen different aspects of their use of force policies reviewed. Each one had to demonstrate at a minimum that the policy complied with all state and federal laws, local ordinances. And one of the big items was, the highlights of it was eliminating the chokeholds except when deadly force is warranted by law. It was a process that involved the creation of five new policies for our department. The policies and also the supporting documentation that accompanied it had to be approved by an independent Illinois law enforcement accreditation program auditor and had to fulfill certain criteria in order to be, even be considered for accreditation. It allowed us to get the federal grant funding plus to be in line with the federal and state use of force guidelines. We are now in full compliance and also include the letter from the Illinois Association of Chiefs for you all to look at. We passed with flying colors our first attempt and told us we did a very thorough job and good work. So something our department and our officers are very proud of.
Thank you very much, chief. I appreciate it. I appreciate you and all the, all the people in the department. Thank you.
You so much.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Public buildings and environments, no report. Thank you, Tom. Building and zoning enforcement, Anthony.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Any old business to come before the board? No old business coming before the board, is there any new business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the boards? We entertain. Second, motion adjourned, motion by Merkel, seconded by Zima, roll call please.
Mr. Merkel. Hi. Mr. Zima. Hi. Mr. Deatley.
Hi.
Mr. Bruno.
Hi.
Mr. Nimick.
Hi.
Mr. Harney.
Hi.
Mr. Kellinger.
Wake up, Kyle. Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, Kyle's still asleep, we're adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Kyle. Wednesday, one forty, work for you?
What's that?
Wednesday, one thirty, work for you?
Yeah, that'll work, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mark, did you catch that? One thirty, Wednesday.